All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Ruston High School, beautiful Ruston High School auditorium is where we find ourselves. It is the public forum. Public forum for the Lincoln Parish School Board Tax, what else do you want to call it? And public, so you're welcome to get out here. Oh, here it is. Let me put this up. Caleb, Caleb Daniel, Ruston Daily Leader. Yeah, tax plan, and that's what this is. So this is a, a public forum for you to come out. One of these days, we can, I mean, you've really got to get out. You've got to get your, I mean, I'm doing this on social media. I get it. It's convenient, it's effective. We know that, we've seen that. And, hang on, there we go. Hey, how are you, Tom? Is, but at the same time, you gotta, you gotta get out there and be heard. Your voice be heard. That's, and that's what this is. So I commend the school board, saying, you know what? Let's, let's talk. Kind of a quick turnaround, whatever it is we're fixing to hear tonight. Okay, there's, my cameras are stuck. No, there we go. There we go. There's your crowd coming in, six o'clock right now. I suspect we'll get started really promptly, right? Commending, I mean, big ups, kudos, kudos to all those. I mean, six o'clock, I mean, let's get real. We have our routines. Do you, do you still call them jammies when you put your jammies on? Or just your sweat evening wear? So I'm in the back and I can zoom, got a camera and had a wire. Oh, I, my bad. Got a camera on the left of the stage and then, then, look at this. We got a headshot. There's the microphone, there's the people. What is this? Here's the church, here's the steeple, open the doors. Look at the people. Okay, let me just run around streaming here. Looks good on my end, sounds good, but only, I'm only coming through the board. I'm not coming over the airwaves, not that I expect you to. There's Caleb Daniel taking a picture. See me way in the back there? Met John Young earlier, and then it was Paul, it was Paul Custodian. Excellent, excellent man earlier. Got quiet in here all of a sudden. It's Greg Phillips coming up.
Is everybody here? All right, thank you all for coming out. This is really loud. Thank you all for coming out. We just wanted to get together and begin the conversation, the dialogue with our community, to talk about some of the issues that we see as a board, some things that we'd like to address for the next few years. So where we landed was, we decided that we were going to put together an idea for a five-year millage renewal. We'll get to the specifics in a minute, but this is a renewal of a current millage that we would do for five years to address some of the infrastructure needs and some security needs and some other items that we would like to address as a district. And then beyond that, we'll talk about the future plan from there. So that's where we are. By the way, I'm Greg Phillips, I'm the current president of the Lincoln Parish School Board. We do have some fellow board members here. If you are a board member, raise your hand. Love to see you, thank you for being here. Representative Chris Turner, I think I saw you wandering around back there. Thank you, sir, for being here. And, and all of our public officials, we're grateful you're here. Just friends and interested parties of the school district, we're certainly glad you're here. So what we're going to do is just briefly talk about, oh, I'm retarded, sorry, I forgot, of this. There's me, okay? And I'm not there anymore. Okay, so what I wanted to do is to talk about sort of putting the skeleton together for what we're looking at doing, and then Mr. Durick will come in behind me and put in the details. So what we're looking at here in Phase One, which again is going to be a five-year millage renewal, as you see here, we're going to be addressing some needs at the Ruston Junior High and Ruston High School facilities. And so we'll get to the specifics in a moment, but what we're looking at, we're going to have a bond election that is on the books for Saturday, April 27th. Now, that's an election that's already there. We're not paying for that election, it's just, it's just an election that's already there. But that's the date that we feel like we should bring this up. We are looking at a five-years, sixteen point five mil, does that mean, anyway, sixteen point five mil renewal. Again, this is not an increase of your current property taxes, it's just going to be five-year extension for this current millage, millage that is on the book. So this millage is going to generate seventeen point five million dollars. So that's a Phase One of our idea of a five-year plan, okay? And so once this initial five-year plan is up, during that time, we as the board are working with, putting together a long-range plan, that we're going to bring in a consultant to help us formulate a twenty-year plan as to address the other needs of our district, which there are many, including our elementary schools and things like that, that we want to take a look at, on what facilities do we need to improve, how we're going to handle all of that. But we'll get to that later, but the needs assessment and feasibility study that we're going to be doing will, will be going on over the next five years. Obviously, that, we're going to have a lot of community input on, a lot of meetings to talk through, what does that twenty-year plan look like? What do we need as a district? But again, that's going to be done over the next couple of years. But this current bond proposal is got to be voted on by the school board on February the sixth. That school board meeting will be held, sorry. February sixth at Ruston Elementary is a noon-time meeting, and that is where we will as a board vote to bring this to the voters or not bring this to the voters, okay? So nothing that we have currently is fixed, it's not cemented in. It is stuff that we are looking at, that we've gathered in from different sources of individuals and what do our needs are. So Phase One Capital Improvement Plan, as you see it, will be on April 27th to generate seventeen point five billion dollars in bonds. The area, I didn't draw that map, it is what it is, but that is District One. It does not affect, as you can see, Dubox, Zedborough, or Shidra. It is just the District One green map, as you see, it will affect those properties, okay? So once again, this is not an additional property tax, it is only a renewal for five years, and, and I'm asking Superintendent Durick to come up and address the details of the plan that we have so far. There's his picture.
Okay, so as we worked with our administrations and our Ruston High School and Ruston Junior High to come up with some needs, what they needed, what they felt were some things that were non-negotiable to try to do for our facilities, whether it be for the school, for security, for safety, for athletics, for anything, dealing with those two schools. And this is kind of where we are. I'll go through all of them first, and then we'll take questions and things at the end. I can go back to a slide if you need me to with all of that. I'll start with Ruston High School. So one of the projects is to redo the roof of the entire school here at Ruston High School. We've worked with Mike Walpole, trying to figure out some of that, our maintenance department of what we need. The roof warranty here is out, we're having some issues with it. It's not in critical condition, but we do want to work on that before it gets to that point. But that would be peeling back some of the roofs we have, which is a phone roof, putting a new one down, and it would have another fifteen-year life on that, once it was finished with that. Next is Ruston High School entrance and security upgrades. Right now, we applied for a COTTS grant, which was a half a million dollars, which we've used to put in a new bell system, communication here at Ruston High School, Ruston Junior High School. There's some fencing that's fixed to go up around the campus here to help with security and people walking on and off campus. But also, that grant does some stuff, some helps us with the front entrance of Ruston High School on being able to control access, who gets in and out. So we have that money already and are working towards finishing some of those projects that should be finished within the next year and a half with those. But to go along with that, as you know, Ruston High School has a lot of doors to go in and out of, so we've got to work to change some of those doors out to make it to where not every door is accessible to come into the school, to keep people out, and make three doors, possibly four, that are ways to come in and out of the school and control some access to the school. It is hard during the day, especially with part of them going outside and coming back in across the boulevard here, going over to the stadium and those, those places. But we do think we can work to limit some of the access in and out of doors here at Ruston High School by replacing some of them and working with that. And then the last thing there on that part, this one, is the Rust, is body scan machines. So we've talked with some districts, Zachary in particular uses what's called an Evolve system that you walk through, it scans, it has an iPad with it, shows kind of what's in your pockets, if there's gun carts, if there's knives, there's different settings you can put on, all of that. It's not a metal detector. We've talked to districts about metal detectors, some other things. Metal detectors are not easily used, they're not necessarily going to identify everything that we want to try to keep out of schools. A metal detector may go off with a belt buckle or other things, so the Evolve system is kind of what's used in a lot of bigger events, just people walking through, you don't like to stop. It gets about a thousand people through in fifteen or twenty minutes, so it wouldn't hold up and people in lines. It is portable, so we can use it. If we bought three of them here at Ruston High School, that would be approximately three hundred thousand dollars. But they are also portable, so we could take them to the gym and use them, for instance, and that, we could take it to the stadium and use it, for instance, over there during athletic events. So we feel like that would not only help us at the school, but also at athletic events here at Ruston High School. Next is adding some parking. If you've noticed, in the back parking lot between the gym and the football stadium, there used to be a new toll there. Whenever the police jury started moving dirt from where they're going to build the health unit, we worked out to where we let allow them to dump it here, to fill in that hole. So finishing that parking lot and making more parking out in front of the gym for students for ballgames for every day would be a good, a good use of that area. The dirt's already been got, we've already got, it didn't cost us anything there for the dirt, so extending and providing more parking here at Ruston High School would be another one. And you'll see the prices as we go along with this. Next would be the Ruston High School covered pavilion. What we're talking about is building it next to the dressing room, field house for football there, between there and the street over there would be the size of a soccer field, but also have a football field on it and the inlays of baseball and softball infield, so they could use it. We feel like we've been to Eldorado, Arkansas, that's what theirs looks like on the inside, it's not covered all the way down. There's one similar to what we're talking about in Marshall, Texas. Those are just a few of them. That allows a lot, would give us another turf field, along with the football field that we have now for band, cheerleaders, dance line, everybody to use and work back and forth with. But it also, in the hot of the summer, it's about fifteen degrees cooler underneath there. I know soccer talked to us last week, that if we'd had this toward the end of the ice storm and they couldn't get on the roads, we were still waiting for ice and things to get off the field, we could have used it then. Whenever it rains, they can still practice getting there, storming, it's still an opportunity to keep everybody going in the, in our athletic facilities over there. Eldorado told us it's one of the most, it is the most-used facility that they have on their campus. So track and running there, if it's bad weather outside, I think everybody could use it. Mr. Moss and I talked about having community pet rallies under there, inside of there, so people could get in if it's weather outside, rather than going downtown and some of those things. So that's, and that's about five million dollars to do that. Next is Ruston High School softball. Currently, they are playing out at the City of Ruston Complex. We have met with the mayor, we've talked through some of that. We would like to move them back to Bittersweet where they used to be, it would give them their own facility. The upgrades there, we could make it compatible with what the boys have. We do own the boys' field, we don't own the field right now where softball plays, creating access for them all the time. We've worked with the city, that's gone fairly well, but there have been a few issues at times when accessibility to the field, if we play the game on Friday and they've got a tournament. I don't know about softball coach, time to time, and basketball, when I coach that, we may need to come back in on Saturday morning and work on some things while it's fresh on our mind. That's not always the case to be able to do that out there. We still would probably use their facility to have tournaments. If we have a tournament, using all four fields. And talking with Mayor Walker today at the end, if we leave, he's fine with that, if we stay, he's fine with that. We've had a good relationship with them, volleyball's gone, played some out there, sports complex in the gyms, and using some of their facilities, them using some of ours for a temporary basis, is a great partnership to have. But when it comes down to what our boys have for baseball, what our girls have for softball, I think it's right for us to work to get back over on Bittersweet to where we have accessibility for everything that we need on a daily basis. And that is three and a half million, which would include putting turf, going up here on top, next to the batting cage building dressing rooms, redoing the backstop, as you can see, new scoreboard, and then the parking around it, we would pave and make for parking for everyone there. I think making it up, up to snuff with what girls have, or boys have at the baseball field would be our goal with that, and giving them access to it year-round, they won't have a little kid's clinic out there or any of that, is what the goal would be for that. Next is updating some things in the gym. If you notice right now, we're under construction down there. We used our, some of our stimulus money of about three million dollars for redoing the front lobby, the bathrooms, upstairs and downstairs. If you've been in there before, you knew that was well overdue. That building was built in nineteen sixty-seven, it's held up very well, but there are some upgrades that need to be done. A few years ago, we started volleyball, so they had been using just a little PE bathroom to, to have as their dressing rooms. So in this construction of the lobby and bathrooms, we're also redoing their dressing room, building them a dressing room underneath on the north, south side of the state, of the gym there. So if we do move forward with this, this would be working on the north side, working to put boys varsity, girls varsity dressing rooms in there, and then JV and freshman dressing rooms for them, which could be used for visitors, and then trying to make a place for officials to dress in there, too. Get some upgrades that are needed in there for dressing room facilities for students that we've had since nineteen sixty-seven. Next, our baseball field, we've got turf out there, there's some upgrades that were done several years ago with dressing rooms, concession stand and all of that. At one time, we were going to partner with the city when they own the field to redo the backstop and the seating, to make it more of a stadium like they have at the other fields out there. So at this point, of course, we've had a tornado come through that's messed up some of the backstop, we've replaced and repaired some of that to the best of our abilities, but really taking that down, starting over with that, putting a new seating area in there that's similar to what they have down on the main fields of our park, right about there with the cover over them and all of that. So that would be the upgrades there, softball. It also would have a press box, just like what we see out there, and then some repairs to the fencing out in the outfield. Then moving over to Ruston Junior High School, we're in dire need of some more parking out there, especially when they have events, whether it's open house, parent nights, other things going on there, athletic events, any of that. So this would be just extending the parking lot in front of the, front of the school towards the interstate to make more parking there. It's much needed for them on a daily basis out there, and with buggies coming across the street, we can't be parking out on the highway once that gets here, so this would alleviate some of that and give us some extra parking. Also out there on the left, you see, this is the entrance to the junior high. We're proposing if this passes to go in and put some fencing across here with gates that are automatic like we have out there in the boulevard, going around the front and closing off access, because we have buggies across the street, we don't want someone wandering over there, but really securing this campus all the way around and to the side over here to keep people from just driving up in there, turning the wrong way, whatever, wandering across the street onto that campus. So some fencing like we have out here in the boulevard, which would look nice, gates that could be buzzed, you could be buzzed in from the office. Still have some access to get into the very front of the school, but we've already got at the front of the school there at Ruston High School where you have to be buzzed in before you're getting into the school. So there's a waiting area, our little areas for you to come to see somebody in the office before you get into the school. And then also, same thing at Ruston Junior High, as we did at Ruston High, would be two of the body scan machines, just for safety, to be used every morning as kids get there to come in. We have a car line and a bus line, so they would be stationed at those two entrances, and they could also be used at any athletic events or anything else we have there. Same thing that we would put at the high school. And then last but not least is buying activity buses. This is just a picture of one. Right now, we use route buses. We buy a route bus, we use it for activities, whether it be ballgames or field trips during the day, to go and then we put it on the route later. But if we go with activity buses, with a little better seat in there, kind of captain's seats, has a seatbelt on them, a lot of times we're going a lot further, especially with being in the district, the schools in Alexandria, Monroe, Shreveport, there's a lot of traveling involved in that. These buses are a little more comfortable, they're a little bigger, but it also will alleviate the need for us to use charter buses for the most part. These would be used instead of that, and they would be just for activity routes, and we would be able to use them, because those are road miles, to get the full twenty years at least out of them before needing to build ones there. And they would not ever be used on a route, they'd just be used for school activities and for athletic events and meetings. So if fourth grade is going to the Valley in Monroe, these are the buses we would use. They are about a hundred, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand, so buying five or six of those to use would be our goal. And of course, if it's a Friday night or a football on somewhere, we may need more, but at least we would have those six to use, and then if we need something at a later date, possibly buying some more down the road or seeing how that would go. But I think we can get a longer life out of these buses, especially just using them for activity buses throughout our, our district here in Ruston. These would be Ruston School District buses, since they're all for that money. And then we have about three hundred and twenty of them assigned, that we could look at some other projects. There will be some fees usually if we pass this to go along, or some contingency money in case things run over that it could be used for, but there's still some, some money there to be assigned. This is just kind of a recap of all of that. Count beyond the sign, that does come up to about two seventeen million five hundred dollars. It is a lot of money, but I do think we've, we've worked with our administration at these two schools to see what our needs are, where we can best spend that, where we can serve kids and give them the best opportunities, whether it be improving the facilities here, security here, junior high, athletics, all of it goes together in educating our students and making them better, better citizens as they, as they leave us and head off to college or to the workforce. Questions and comments? I think this is where I turn it back over to Mr. Phillips. No, just kidding. I'll take any comments or questions, or yes, ma'am? So we buy new buses every year, usually three to five. Those, some of those, those usually are activity buses, and then they go on around. If we bought these, then we would not, when we bought new buses, they would go straight to our routes, rather than using them on this. A regular bus is about a hundred and twenty thousand. Okay, so now, I will say this, these buses are air-conditioned, heated, all of that, have some storage in them. Our buses now, we've used S R money to, we're in the process of air conditioning our buses right now, all of those that are fifteen years and younger, we are going through, and when we're buying new buses, we are buying the air-conditioned buses now. But these have a little more storage and then seatbelts and some more safety things with them. And they would not be on, so that would allow the other buses to go straight on to our routes.
So basically, there's like a thirty thousand dollar difference in purchase goals than the ones that we already have that we utilize?
About that, about twenty-five, thirty, yeah.
Twenty-five and thirty?
Yeah.
And right now, we have how many sustainable buses, or we could have to buy them?
Well, we buy, yeah, we buy buses every year, because they time out or they are getting worn out and we don't use them anymore, so to keep that process going, where we're not needing to buy fifteen or twenty route buses a year, we buy three to five regular route buses every year.
So right now, how many do we have?
Who, buses or activity buses?
Activity, the buses that we're doing now?
We keep about ten, fifteen activity buses right now. And both, what, those are just, you just rotating them off, depending upon how many buses I, the, the biggest issue is, I say biggest issue is, we're able to, if we get an activity bus, we're able to put those route, those buses straight on. Now, and the kids that are driving every day have better safety, the brand bus, we're not have to worry about things because we're not having to put them on activity and waiting for three years to rotate them off.
And also part of our goal was, right now, a lot of times when we get in playoffs and going on trips, we charter them. So these would be used instead of chartering the buses, which would save our schools some money there, too.
So mechanically, how much more would that cost in budget if we gained nine more buses, extra thirty-five dollars more per bus that happen? But we've always had something that's been in play for how many years that we utilize a great budget that we already have, that don't stretch to, to a limit that we can't afford at this particular time, considering it's like four or five projects that you're showing. So if we have something in place that actually works for the community and has worked for years for the community, because school is at three activities or after three, maintenance is a cost as well, if you add nine more buses to what we already have, then there's a whole new budget that we could be talking about, that would add everything to, to the project that you're speaking of.
I disagree, because now we have, the older buses that are running on routes, but we can have newer buses running around.
So money is maneuvered around for the mechanical issue of adding an extra nine buses, and you're saying with an extra thirty thousand, that that's not going to go, not necessarily to the school, considering there's a lot of projects that needs to be done, and that's something that we already have in place to utilize?
Oh, I have no reason. So you're saying, like, activity buses? So you're saying like activity buses, you ask those guys at the school, those activity buses, the coaches and everybody come kick them off in the middle of the day, they can't run practice, but they're, they're, they're sitting there, you know, they're not running a school route. So our, our school route buses are actually old and so they cause more problems with us, not even sorry with us owners. But we're having to fix them way more than we have to fix, if we get these activity buses or we're having new buses running on the route.
So let's speak less to say for a match. Um, everything that we do to our account mechanical issues, my thing is, do we have a budget for the repairs that added into the amount that you're speaking of? Because even if you add nine more buses, alone what we already have.
Okay, so.
It's going to be a problem somewhere down the line, that's nothing to fret about.
We actually wouldn't add nine, I mean, we will go ahead and insert plus out some of our older buses. Our fleet's going to stay about the same size because we're not going to increase the number of buses we have on the route. We're going to have these activity buses that we use and then the other buses we have that are on the route will still be there. So still, so in the, it may take a couple of years, but we will phase out some of the older buses and keep these route buses, keep these buses and not put them on routes. So we're going to still, if there's eight buses we have in all, we're still going to end up at about eighty buses. It may be eighty-one or two, or two, oh, the first year or two, but like until we phase out some of the older ones, it'll still be the same number of buses. And honestly, like using these buses on long runs, like that's better for the bus and like we will have less, um, maintenance on the, um, especially depending on if we can use gas or diesel, like diesel buses are a lot better on that.
Yeah, I like that.
And that, I understand that, that's something that we're trying to address on route buses. It won't be with the gas, it's a problem issue. And you would have to deal with the D E S system. I can, I have to stop two, five thousand dollars to replace just the D E S system. And I don't want to feel the whole issue of gas hitting for the same price. So without being able to, to do that and have a diesel just running, that gives us a lot of trouble. It helps us out on the route, fuel costs, maintenance costs, I think. I have learned diesel parts are way more expensive than gas.
Yeah, they are, but I like diesel. You break down this, I'm done. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
So the reason why we have multiple stores, like I know for my kids and my parents, why they take them on their trips.
I say they would have multiple stores, right, too?
Yeah, so it does afford, it doesn't need, how much support do I have to give them? And, uh, they're all working on some, I can be like, there's four, four, yeah.
But it does have storage and it does, I think it does have lots on, I mean, I'm a big concern right now, wrapping hands. Yeah, and depending on which, of course, if we pass this and do that, I will have to take bids and see which buses we end up with on that, so.
Well, safer for our kids as well over the interstates and long travel, even across the state or out of state. Being able to have those activity buses where they can buckle in when going on the interstate or even like you said in Monroe, the little one. That would be the advantage of, of, as a parent.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Uh, being a, uh, you mentioned a long range plan, certainly the suit will be developed later. Uh, but my only question is, uh, why wasn't the long range plan developed for this plan about four?
So we were trying to get some things together that we heard from the community last time that they would support. Um, because I think in our last bond issue, some of the things that were, that pushed, that made it fail from what I was told from community people and others is our elementary schools and some of the changes we wanted to make there. Um, trying to figure that out is going to take a bit more time. And we're hiring an outside consultant to come in, put some fresh eyes on that, to look over it and advise us exactly what we should do, where those schools should be located, where, what schools we should invest more money in, and all of those type of things are going to take more time. Whereas these things we knew were immediate needs and, um, we felt like, uh, enlisting last time, this is what our community had said, uh, they would support some of the things that we had in there rather than the school. And, and honestly, we left some of the elementary schools and things out of anything here because we didn't want to go putting money into them and then have a consultant come in in three or four or five years from now and come back and say, hey, we don't need to use that school. We need to do this or this. And then, so we wouldn't put money into it and then have to tear it down or do something different with it, whatever comes back to the consultants.
Yeah, because to me it seemed feasible to develop a long range plan, it itemized what you want to do and what you're responsible for.
Right. And I mean, I've heard from some people like they're in favor of doing a shorter range plan. Uh, let's, if we're going to pass a bond, we're more willing to do it for four or five years rather than for twenty years all at one time. So it may be doing this, doing it again for a four or five year or whatever in the future, or it may be fifteen or twenty years. I, I mean, that's, would be up to what the society or what we need. All right, there, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. So there's different sizes of that, pitchers mound bases are all different, something like, yeah.
Using the cap plate, would we do right now maybe in all range?
Right, I mean, I, so how long do we wait? I mean, they've been out there, uh, three years already. Um, we, we went ahead and bought the baseball field for our baseball team to have and use. How much longer do we wait? I mean, giving them access to it or waiting three to five more years to do something, uh, doesn't seem to me fair to girls, um, when we're sitting here. Now, we will still use the complex out there for tennis, but we have boys and girls tennis both out there, uh, using that facility and working with the city on that. I think going forward though, we pull it to our softball students, give them the best opportunity, uh, to succeed, but to also give them something they can be proud of, that's theirs, um, that they can call home. Uh, they're not sharing, um, with a tournament team that comes in here and all of those things. Uh, and it's like we told the mayor today, we're willing to work with you if you've got a tournament and there's some overflow. Somebody needs to go to, to our field, if we got it built to have a practice or to batting cages in the summertime or something, then we certainly would be yielded to working with them still on that.
Five years over the campaign, I would say, you know, that would be a problem. And then when the next, the next game comes into power here.
Right, okay.
So we could get some of the other things down, the things that are on his head, going with power be my thing.
Okay. I mean, that's what we're listening to today, suggestions, what's the thing needed or not needed, um, going forward.
Uh, I, I just figured I would speak, just kind of in response to that. Um, if anybody that, I'll probably at least the sport doesn't, uh, you know, baseball and softball play at the same time. Um, they have different sized fields, they require different equipment. Um, if you're sharing, the baseball and softball wouldn't have any, you know, there would. Uh, right now baseball does have their own field, um, they're able to access that year round, twenty-four, seven, anytime they want to. I mean, that's what you're going to need for any, any five A program in particular to be able to be successful. I mean, everybody in our district, just about probably every five A program in the state, all has their own facility. Everybody in Lincoln Parish has their own facility. When you do, you're able to have the autonomy to go in whenever you want. Individual players can go in, use batting cages, they can go and use the facilities. The way that it works right now with softball, um, we wanted to be able to have exclusive use of facilities, but we don't. It is a, um, five day a week possibly, um, sometimes four day a week even during our season. Uh, Saturdays, we don't have use of that, uh, during, off of the season. We aren't able to go and use that, tournaments get priority, travel ball teams get priority, league ball gets priority. Um, we do not have access to training, uh, we don't have any way to go on the weekends. Uh, we don't, we have other people using our field, we have umpires using our locker room where our equipment is stored. And I don't think it's fair for a female sport to be diminished and not looked at it like it deserves the same amount of time and respect and, and money as the baseball sport or any other sport for that. So I just wanted to, for anybody that has kind of been involved in the sport, is that it is a big deal to not own it. You know, when you lease a premises, you do not have access, you can't build a program. There's no way that you can have individual players go and get work on their own. And it's definitely doesn't seem like it's as big of a deal when you have such a nice complex. And we do, we're fortunate to have that in our community, but as nice as it is, you're still, you're still leasing it. You don't have any pride of ownership and you have other people sharing it. So we just, there's, there's no way to move on from that.
Somebody help me, yeah, right here.
I really understand, uh, just saying that, that's right around here. So. My experience is as a civil engineer, Air Force, and also on the board of educational institution that enjoy the opportunity to build new facilities. And then all of a sudden, they've got problems and we all will have problems with facilities. So we're asking for, you're asking for newer facilities, which is good, that's fine. But sometimes there's going to be a requirement, new maintenance on those facilities. If we don't have the funds set back for the maintenance on the new facilities, then we're going to have a problem in the future, especially when it comes to, for instance, you put a new roof on this older facility, which you need to do, you've got it there, it goes up. But you also need the, you know, I, I suggest if you haven't already gotten it, an assessment of all the roofs on all the buildings, all of the water heaters, all of the air conditioning and heating systems. You need that in order to forecast over a, a ten, twenty year period. In the Air Force, we use a five percent on all of our facilities. To either maintain a certain item, a mechanical item, or a roof. And then over a period of twenty years, every facility would have had the maintenance done that's required. And so that was always in the budget. And, uh, my question is, are we looking at a budget that includes that kind of granularity in upgrading and preparing for systems that may, because if you know a system's going to fail and we, you can get that on when, when you expect a heater to fail, when you expect an HVAC to fail. And then at that point in time, you can begin to get bids in a better price on repairing or replacing those items. So that's my question, are we being frugal like that by establishing a maintenance budget? That the congress, that kind of, that you buy a new facility, you can guarantee that not too far down the road, there's going to have to be some maintenance on that new facility.
Right, so we do have, uh, evaluations been done on all of our roofs. Um, so with some of our stimulus money that we received, we did go to Ruston Junior High School and repair that roof, um, with stimulus money to make sure that it's in good shape. Um, Ruston High School, yeah, Ruston High School is our oldest roof. That's where our maintenance department, where we need it most right now. It's also what Mike Walpole, our architect, has told us, uh, that we need most right now. But we do have a maintenance, a five mil maintenance fund that we use for repairs. Um, Mr. Evanson who runs that department does prioritize. I mean, we are about, we are spending a half a million dollars here at Ruston High School for the new air conditioner chillers that are out back that we used stimulus money for to go ahead and replace those. They were getting outdated, so are we looking for, yes, we are. And we've even, we tried to use a lot of our stimulus money to those projects to keep us ahead in some of that rather than some other districts I know we use some of that money for, uh, teaching positions and other things. While we did use it for some areas like that, our main focus was some of the upkeep, uh, not only in the Ruston District, but also out in Central Borough and in Children and up in Duba. So we do have a maintenance plan, uh, Mr. Evanson handles that in the maintenance department. Uh, we've got HVAC guys that work for us, we've had plumbers, um, electricians. Um, we've had a company come in and walk all of the roofs and inspect them. So we are looking for that. And I do know in the future, we've got some more roofs coming up that are going to need some care. And that's why we were trying to address this one first, because it's the worst. And if we need maintenance money for the others, we can. But also if we're going to come up with a long range plan, looking forward to that. Um, before we go put a new roof on a school and then have a company come in here and tell us like, you need a whole new school or whatever we need before we put money into that again to do that. But I mean, right now, I think we've got a great maintenance department that has our schools, uh, in good shape. I mean, they are, our elementary schools are sixty years old, this school here building is old. Um, so, uh, we have put maintenance and kept up with that over the years through some bond things that we've done. So I will take it like we have, look forward to that and try, look down the road at that and try to plan for that, yes. I mean, I guess the new facilities that we would be talking about, um, would be, really the others are what we have. Some up, keep enough, some upgrades to them, softball field we've had, but it would, and it would be a new facility. Um, but far as Ruston that type, that's going to be more, what those facilities will need is more making sure we take care of the turf, doing the maintenance plan with them, upkeeping a lot of that, that stuff. And we do plan to take care of that and look at our budget, uh, what we have going forward to do that.
Um, one thing that, uh, you know, seeing all of this, all at one time, um, something that may help the community to better understand and everything that they're trying to do here is maybe show a priority list on all of this. What are we prioritizing first and what the money would be used for first? Like security or parking or, you know, the roof, things like that. And where all of these extra facilities things falls in that priority?
Well, and I'll take this, like our number one priority if this passes is securing Ruston Junior High and Ruston High School without a doubt. I mean, I think Ruston Junior High is probably higher on the priority list. If the buggies is coming in the next, I guess, two thousand twenty-five, we've got a little time still to get to work on that and get it secured before it gets here. Um, but we certainly will prioritize all of that. But in working with, uh, contractors and our architect, what we have up here is what we feel very confident in being able to do on us. But I mean, um, we could certainly look and put it in an order that would be, you know, this would be at the bottom if we don't have the money to get to without process, yeah.
How do you like the ball being just a little bit, I mean, but they do have somewhere to play the ball. But we need the roof and we need to support any of that.
Sure, I agree.
And then if it's money, then then do the ball game.
Sure.
Because, you know, it's not like, I can see if you don't have a play, then this, but we can see the news in the country.
Sure.
Yes, it's not one less.
I don't know if it's a student, but maybe you don't recover her hand over your knowledge yet.
She's used to it, it's okay. Um, and I'll speak to that too. Now, I guess I'll, I'll go back to, uh, the equal opportunity for both sports. Um, and I think you've got probably more of an issue there maybe underlying that has really not come up. And I think you've got probably more of an issue there, maybe underlying, that has really not come up yet. I, I think you have potential legal implications, you know, from what I see. Even think you've got potential Title IX issues there. I think there's some disagreement on that. You know, we have to have equal opportunity as a female sport to be, or any female organization should have equal opportunity, equal, not everything is equal, but we should have the same thing as a comparable male sport. Right now, we don't do that. Years ago, whenever the city purchased, uh, excuse me, when the, when the city was leasing and the school board purchased the baseball field back, we didn't do that for softball. I don't know why that was done, I wasn't a part of any of that. But I do know that at the time, that should have been done for softball too. So we've already been put off, we've been put off for years. So, and we've seen decline from that. You're going to see future decline. You're going to see coaches struggle. It's not an optimal way of, of having a program and being able to run a program when you don't have the autonomy to do that. So you're seeing it go down the toilet as it is. So I think that you, you really discredit something that is important to a large group of female athletes that are there now, and athletes that are coming up. And we've got, nobody's commenting on something that's five million dollars that isn't necessary. Okay, so I think it's great to be able to have this indoor facility or covered anything, but right now, football does have a place to play. Soccer has a place to play. Baseball has a place to play. Everybody has a place to play, a place to practice, and Ruston softball does not, and they have it for years. So if you're going to knock anything off, it makes it real simple to cut out that five million dollars. And guess what? We've got a spot for it. So nobody wants to address that because I'm sure that that probably benefits a lot more programs, and I'm all for it. I think it's fantastic, I'd love to have it. But it's really easy to go out and say, well, let's not forget, let's forget about these girls because, you know, they already have something. We, we don't. We, we share with lean kids. We don't have it for half the time that we should be able to have it. So we've already been put off for years, and I'd like to not be put off for another time.
Thank you, we're going to meet some microphone.
Thank you. Uh, I have two questions, and I'm agreeing. The first is, I'm just curious about, you said that the activity bus will be used only in District One, for District One. Is that, does that mean you don't practice sharing the resources amongst schools?
We do, but like in District One, so like when we're doing the bond here, if District, if we build a facility here, like Simmsburg, Shutter, Ruston can come use them, but taking a bus for them to be used if the Ruston School District and voters here use, would be a little bit of a problem, I believe. Now, if Simsburg wants to do one, they usually have some M and O money that they can do one. If Shutter wants to put it in theirs, then the concern can be Duba will probably use it because Duba kids all come down here to school after fifth grade, so. If legally we can do that, like, I don't have a problem with them using it, but it would be first priority for the Ruston School District because that's the voters, if this goes forward, would be the ones that pay for it.
So that means then that, let's say, Simsburg Shutter, if they went on a long trip, they still have to charter a bus?
Probably so, or maybe. I'll say this, if we talk to our legal counsel and some others, and they say it's fine for them to use it, I don't think it's a problem for them to use it. But I think what I do believe is like the first priority has to be for the Ruston School District kids.
I understand, right.
Sure.
Thank you. My next question concerns the body scan machine.
Sure.
I'm all for security, and we definitely need security for our kids this time. But I'm just wondering, did you look into the, you know, there is some discussion on the use of those machines causing anxiety amongst students and. We definitely don't want anything that's going to diminish their performance in school.
Sure.
But I was just wondering if you looked into that and also, those, those machines cause the kids to distrust the leadership, the administrative leadership, and that kind of thing. I, I just, I don't mean to bring that up as just a down or negative side of it, but I'm just concerned that we don't get something that's going to be a monster for us.
So in talking, so to add to your question about that, yeah, we've talked to several districts. Some use metal detectors. And what we, what we've understood is, you walk through a metal detector, it goes off. You have to stop the kid, you have to warn them, see where it's at. To be quite honest with you, some of the biggest problems is belt buckles. Sometimes ladies' bras have metal in them, so running a metal detector over them is uncomfortable. So some of those are what we heard from some school districts that are using metal detectors. What we're talking about is called an evolved system. You just walk through it. It scans if you have a gun part, it picks that up. If you have a knife, if you have a blade, if you have some of these things in there. There's different settings to put that on, but you're just walking through it. They use them, for instance, at a pro football game. That's what they use at some basketball games, a lot of colleges use them. You're just steadily walking through there, there's no stopping you, if you don't have anything in there. If you do, it's going to come up on an iPad and it's going to show like the pocket, or it'll put a square around where the problem is. So then, you may be called aside, hey, what is it? Oh, I forgot, I got my keys, or I got, I left my pocket mic, let me go put it back in the truck, whatever it is. It identifies that, so you're not stopping kids and warning them. You're allowing them. And if they don't have anything, which what we found is kids get used to it and know what they can bring and can't bring. So then it becomes just, you're just walking through like a normal day, and you don't stop, and it's not even a problem for them. But what we found in researching it, this is the best system to not be intrusive of kids or to discourage them from coming to school and doing those. That does discourage hopefully from bringing items that they shouldn't bring to school. No officers, and we'd have to have somebody trained on staff that could watch the iPad and have us at the, at the entrances.
Thank you.
Does that answer everything? You don't need a mic?
Um, even though you're thinking of it from that aspect, you have to also look at it. It's a really good system. Because children nowadays, young teachers, you see it on TV, they're killing teachers, they're doing this, they're doing that. You would rather be, feel safer being there, like you said, to look at it from, from a distance. Because you don't know what mindset the others have nowadays. And our kids have become so volatile, to we need a system in the school that protects them, but it also protects the adult in that building. We need something that's equipped, that can catch it ahead, where they can send the right person to security. Or whatever they need to secure a situation faster than being attacked and creating a bigger problem, creating another issue as far as, you know, medical bills and male breakfast suits and things of that nature. So we have to kind of look at that from a bigger picture. That it's actually a safe door all the way around the board. But each individual within this building, not just children or, or the safety of how it's built, is superior. Because today, we prefer to have something that gives us a notice ahead of time than too late because it's not like it used to be where you want to see that principal at that door. Because that principal could be standing at that door. But yesterday, somebody could have came and gave us a bomb threat at our school. Somebody could have came around our school, one of the children, or friends, or anybody. Somebody could have came around our school and created a disruption that if we had a system like, what he's speaking of, they catch it in advance, they have the proper things in place, outstanding face, a lawsuit for the school, the children are safe, being physically informed by someone else, any individual, whether it's in the daughter or child. So I think that's not a plus, and I hope that's at the top of your list.
Um, now, I'm just going to say, I, for the purpose of itself, I really don't have much need to visit, uh, but when you talk about the security aspect, uh, as far as the security aspect, that should be something that the young minds of all of us who, ready to get to. Make those six, have two schools secure, and the other campuses available.
So at our other school campuses, at all of our elementary, Simmsburg, Shutter, Ruston, not the only one, that we don't have controlled access set right now. All of our others in a few, in a bond issue before, have the security to where you can't walk in the front door without being buzzed in. They all have that already, every school in the district other than this one. The extras.
Now, this is like a charity machine.
Right.
Because right now, whether the children are big or small, you can't trust other than that.
Right. So our goal was to get these five, to start with it, see how it works. This is our biggest need, Ruston High School, wherever our big, our most students at, the junior high is next. See how it works, if there's issues, and then going forward, trying to move towards having them in all of our schools. But this would be a first step to get us there, to try something, especially as expensive as they are, before we went and bought twenty or fifteen of them and decided like, eh, maybe that wasn't exactly what we needed. But I think, from what we've researched right now, this is our best option. And if we can try and get them and try them here in the junior high, which is our most high traffic areas with kids. If you see, study any of the shootings and things, most of those are junior highs and high schools, or somebody coming in from the outside, and we do have those schools secured with controlled access.
If you remember this, our back last year, the elementary team.
Right, I understand. Yeah, I'm answering. Go ahead. Anybody else? Phillips?
Mr. corrected me on something, and I appreciate it very much. That this election could cost us something as a, as a board to bring this to vote in April. I, I, it is an official voting day, and so if there's other institutions that bring an election that day, we would share that cost, is that correct? But if nobody else does, we would pay that entire cost of the election. So I wanted to clarify that, I didn't want to misspeak on that. But anyway, so, is there any other questions?
I know everybody couldn't be here tonight, so I mean, if there's somebody that has a question that you know of that needs something clarified, please call the office. I'm more than willing to try to meet if it's a small group, if it's one person, if it's ten people, to try to clarify before the board votes next Tuesday. Because once we vote and set up, set a plan, then that's what we would have to follow if, if it passes. But I am more than willing to meet whenever somebody wants to come by through the day, in the evening. And I'll be at Shutter tomorrow evening. Uh, we have a chamber banquet on Thursday evening. I've got Wednesday this weekend, some more than willing to meet with people if they need us to, to talk through to better understand what we're trying to do. And then, if the board votes to put this on the ballot, then I think we will have some more meetings, trying to get the word out to everybody to understand what we're trying to do and, and why. And then, in the following months, if this passes, we will do an RFP to try to get an outside company, a firm, that could come in here and do a study of our, our elementary schools to see where we need to go with that. So if there's a question or something, or you want to meet with me, let me know. Much thought? I love that I can monetize how much thought's going into it, but I think.
My question, the reason I ask that is, you've got STEM building over there, and it would be open. I don't see any use.
You're not going to see people there because we bust some over there. Like, um, right now, we have a robotics team that has the whole backup that they use every afternoon to, to build their robotics and all of that. We do have trainings over there. I mean, it is used, I wouldn't say that there's somebody there every day, but I mean, we are using it.
Was the investment worth it?
I'm not sure. I mean, we used it tonight, this afternoon in the day for a fast night. I mean, that, is it worth it? I mean.
And I think I'm saying, you know, if we were to do things without, you know, the last thing we do, and you have to, you got around on these next draws, and I know, uh, and that's the true aim of what we did. You know, I, I have to be open, and I have to take it a little longer to understand all the work that you have. And, uh, I just think that, you know, we all make a rush to do these things. And it doesn't appear that a, oh, a consideration is being given. And I just think, you go down a little bit, and figure out what we need to do.
Yes, sir. I'd like to take exception to that. That's what my job is on a daily basis, is to try to help evaluate all of these things and all of these sports and things that these kids need. I would encourage you to, to come look at some of these places and, and listen to some parents about what their arguments are for their kids. I think you're too quick to say no without going through and doing some research yourself on what it is that, that we need done for our kids. And at the end of the day, at the end of the day, that's what I feel like y'all need to be pulling for in the same direction is to do what's best for the kids involved. I would also add that I don't, if we pass this, it's not like you're picking and choosing what parts of it you feel like we need more than the other. I agree with you, softball is way out in front of what a covered pavilion should be. Is it going to benefit softball? For sure, it's going to benefit a bunch of kids. But I think, for the issues that the concern was for on, on the softball field, I think that is probably, if you had to label things, one through whatever, I think it's probably a big, a big need for circuit, right along with the security things and the, and the roof and all of that. That's by far out in front of what the, the covered pavilion would be. But how many of us out here have gone and spoken with people that have one? One, two, three. So we've got three people in the building that have gone and talked to people that have one to see what the benefits are for the kids that go to school there in that school district. So I would encourage you, before you make a decision and say that that's, that's fixing to be a football facility, that's what they want to do, and I realize that, that's probably what people envision and what they think. But if you would do your own research and go find out, talk to some people and see what it is that people have to say and what the administrators have to say about the benefits for all the athletics, the band, the cheer, all of those programs. And at the end of the day, benefiting kids that go to school here and at Ruston Junior High and all of those things, I think that you, you may change your, your mind as far as like how you actually feel about that. And so you don't necessarily, if you, if we vote on it, you're not, well, Mr. Birkin said it is a fluid thing, so if there's something that people for the majority are just absolutely against, and you know, if that's one of them, that's fine. But there are some things on this list that have to be done, really, to be honest with you. That really it's not a choice, that if, if we decide not to do this, then there's going to have to be some things done that are going to have, I mean, we're not going to have a choice in order to change. And so, you know, I would urge you to think about those things before you make a decision.
I, I like that, that's what I think. You know, if you could try it hard, do my best, that this tiny, uh, potential indoor facility, uh, patent, it worked. You know, you haven't said anything about it to John Q. Public since that tax failure. And now you want to come up and talk like you look at an island and. And now you want to come up and talk like you looked at an item in ten minutes and decide what's best for these stakeholders. All I said was, we need your time to think about it. You get your paycheck from here. I would expect you to jump out of your pocket and walk and support what.
You don't know about.
That's exactly right. I know exactly who you are. I know exactly who you are, well.
You're wrong, man. You're wrong.
Well, I should be wrong. I'm a voice and I'm speaking.
But you're wrong.
You know? That, that, on that way, dog. So, I don't expect anything else from you. I mean, but I can't, can't nobody disagree, not supposed to disagree with what is being said.
You ain't coming no more, you're wrong.
You know?
Yes, uh, when I, when I decided to speak, it was before, um, I wanted to, I wanted to commend the superintendent for bringing us together tonight, number one. I think this is great for the community, and it's great for our efforts that we're going into this, to go into it together. And I just, I just appreciate you, Mr. Durick, for bringing us together tonight. And let me say this too, back to you. I hope, I don't know what your plan is, Mr. Phillips, what your plan is with the school board, but it's, I would just definitely hope that Tuesday, February sixth, that we can find a unified school board to keep the community together. That's gonna be most important. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. We expect excellence in our community. We all thrive for excellence. We all, we all hope that we can do the very best. I wanna, I wanna compliment our schools and our school board with how they've handled themselves and how they continue to handle themselves with a projection in the, in the forward-looking process that we're going through. Certainly, I understand that thought and perseverance is all part of excellence. In this particular instance, I think that these things are gonna provide opportunities for all of our students to excel, both physically, mentally, culturally, any possible way that they can. And I, I strongly feel that if we wanna continue to be the community that we are now, we need to take these steps. We need to be vigilant in, in following up on that and supporting going forward. Because if you're not going forward, nobody stands still. You're going backwards. I'm, I'm all about going forward. I mean, first off, I wanna thank the school board for coming up with this. Y'all are taking a beating in certain respects, whether that's deserved or not, I'm not so sure, Bill. But let me tell you something, Bill, what do you think, you know, what you ask for?
That's what we're doing right now. Okay.
We're doing that right now, we're discussing as a community. And I guess it's not good enough for you. Well, I'll tell you what, softball ladies, I don't know any other, but I'm gonna guarantee you this, because I know you're in the school board real well, y'all are gonna get what you need. Okay, girls? Just settle down, relax, and let us work on it. Because I know these people, they're honest folks, they want what's right. As far as the security, we ain't got enough money up there to secure these places, I think. And let me tell you something, you say, well, you know, this and that and whatnot about Ruston, Louisiana. Well, I also, a good friend, so that some of us other folks in here, not long ago, were in San Antonio. It's here, people, whether you like it or not. But, school board, thank y'all very much.
Uh, this is my last final comment. Uh, I will thank the school board for opening this up to the community for input, but don't stop doing this type of dialogue. You need, when you get dialogue, it's positive, a dangerous condition over the community's say with regard to what you're saying. So, keep on doing this, don't stop because some comments is positive, some comments are negative. This is needed in our community, but the input is dangerous, possibly, see.